Good evening, welcome to the regular meeting of the Villa Park City Council. I hereby call the meeting to order. Steve, will you please call the roll?
Okay, Councilwoman Miles.
Present.
Councilwoman Jones.
Here.
Mayor Protem Rosini.
Here.
Mayor Pitts.
Here.
We've received notice that Councilman Wu is out with a health issue this evening, so he will not be joining us. It's a hused absence.
Thank you. And tonight, I'd like to ask that we all send our well wishes to Councilman Wu. He had an accident at his home yesterday and is recovering. We wish him best wishes and to his family as well tonight. So, keep him in your prayers, and hopefully he'll recoup fast and come back. So today, I'd like to ask Mayor Protem to lead us into the Pledge of Allegiance.
If you're able, please stand, place your right hand over your heart, and face the flag. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, please be seated.
Thank you. The Villa Park City Council and staff, welcome you to this meeting, and we encourage your participation. If you wish to address the city council, please complete and submit a speaker card to the city clerk before the scheduled meeting time. Speaker cards can be found outside or back of the room here. Speakers will be called individually during the public comments section of each item they wish to speak on. Speakers will be limited to five minutes for each period, and speakers will be able to submit comments in writing they should have by 3:00 PM today. Those comments will be read aloud along with the public comments section of each item. So, I say this every month, this is the fun part of the city council meeting, and you know, where we get the opportunity as a council to recognize a distinguished citizen here in our community that has, you know, given themselves selfishly to help foster growth and everything that goes on in our community. And I know that we've all heard the phrase "service above self." Well, if you haven't, that phrase does speak to the distinguished citizen this month. You will know it well if you are Rotarian or who our distinguished citizen is. Contribution beyond yourself keeps your life in check, where you form a good foundation to build your successes upon, and I believe this person does in so many ways even beyond the capacities of most. I'm honored tonight to introduce our distinguished citizen and to share some of his life story with you. So, William F. Underwood, Bill, as we all know him. You know, Bill and I had a chance to sit down and talk about his life experiences in both public and private sector. Bill has a significant amount of public sector and community charitable experience that spans 32 years. He's currently our city treasurer, and was one of the founding members as he chaired our investment advisory board for many years. Thanks to his direction and the work of the board, the city has enjoyed substantial savings through the establishment of our trust 115, our Section 115 trust, and other endeavors. Bill earned his master's MBA back east. After going to college, he had a calling to serve as he would in our military, and was a US Navy supply officer. He served on the USS Blue Destroyer. After leaving the military, he became a partner with Anderson Consulting for 14 years, and went on to become a managing partner and co-founder of the ITG Group here on the West Coast. Bill and his wife Sherry moved to Villa Park in 1980 from Chicago, so they decided to come from cold to warm, you know? I don't blame him, I would too. They were married 41 years and were blessed with two children, John and Heather, along with five grandchildren. I asked him what drew him and his family to Villa Park, and his answer did not surprise me, as it was the same as many. They were looking for a certain lifestyle that included pool, horses, a quiet and safe community, that had a small-town culture, and was consistent with living in an executive-style living. Well, he found it here. He told me he looked in Palos Verdes, and as he rode to the top of the hill, all he saw was fog, and ran out of there as fast as he could to Villa Park and brought his home here. Bill has invested heavily in our community through his volunteerism, most especially through his involvement in our Rotary Chapter. He, along with Pam Dunn and others, are the reasons that I chose to become a Rotarian here in Villa Park. He served on the Grand Jury Alumni Association along with tenures with many foundations across Orange County. His public services include Villa Park, Santiago Canyon College Foundation, Orange County Sheriff, and the Orange County Grand Jury. I asked Bill what his vision was for Villa Park, and he said Villa Park should never change, and we should all work to keep it the way it is today. I also asked him how he wanted to be remembered. He said "good husband, good father, and a great neighbor." Relationships are very important. Bill, we are all extremely fortunate to have you and your family as part of our city family. We're proud of your accomplishments and all that you do for our city. I also want to extend all of our gratitude for your service to our country, and we're honored to have you as our distinguished citizen. I know you want to say something.
So, in my continuing role as treasurer, I must correct the mayor. I actually have three children, and the one you left out is here tonight.
My apologies.
And she's the closest. She's in Orange, the others in Texas and Connecticut.
Thank you for that, Bill. We appreciate that, and we have some things here for you. First of all, again, I'd like to thank you for your service to this country, and we have a pin here that recognizes that you are a veteran for our country.
Thank you.
And we also have a distinguished citizen pin for you, as well as a certificate showing our gratitude for everything that you do for our city.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Picture with the council.
I think it's Rotary. Oh, of course, it's video. Come on, sorry.
Can we get the council?
Yeah.
But I also have some other folks here that I'd like to take a picture with.
Okay. Brendan.
I'm Brendan Moeller, the Military Veteran Liaison from Congresswoman Youngkin's office. So I just wanted to, first off, say, "How can I be like you when I grow up?" So, first off. I'm a Rotarian as well, so I appreciate that, your commitment to service of the community. But on behalf of Congress, I wanted to present you with a Congressional Recognition Certificate. I'm an Army veteran, so I'm going to say "Go Navy," but I'm going to stop short of saying "Good Army." So, I can't go that far, but congratulations, sir.
Thank you very much. [applause]
And Bill, Chairman Dono Agar, could be here tonight, or Pat, who is our manager, she took the photo shot, they have reactions to it. So, they extend their gratitude for everything, wish you well, and they will have some more certificates for you. So, let's take a picture with the council.
Sure. Brendan?
Oh.
We do have one more, I'm sorry, I forgot.
Should we do the picture first? Okay, hi everyone, my name's Paulina Alvarez, I'm the field representative for Assembly Member Philip Chen. It's an honor to recognize you for the Distinguished Citizen of the Month. You're a great asset to the community, your vision, your leadership, your knowledge is forever honored and noticed.
Thank you.
Yes, of course.
[applause] Okay. Would you like to?
I do have one comment.
Okay, go ahead.
I'm always skeptical of distinguished individuals, our most valuable players, because it happens with a team. And as you all know, in Villa Park, you don't get anything done unless you've got a team together. So I'd love for the Rotarians to come up around me and get a picture of the Rotarian team, please. This is a powerful team in Villa Park, and I joined it late in life, so I've only been a member about 12 years or so, because I kept flying around the world trying to make money. But it's so much more rewarding to do things for people in Villa Park.
You guys come on up front.
Come on around me.
Come on up front.
Okay.
All Rotarians. It's pretty awesome.
[laughing]
That's it.
No, no.
I can't have somebody be talking.
Those pictures, the one with me nodding.
How much fun we have every Thursday.
Okay.
Come Thursday morning at 7:00, join us.
Oh, Scott. That's why I was up here.
And one other, if I could.
Yes, sir.
Being treasurer is quite easy, because the finance director is terrific, and the city manager is terrific. So Steve and Lee would come on out, please, a picture, because you help them. It's hard to get Steve in a picture. It is. He does look good tonight, he looks sharp. Okay, Bill, can I have my meeting back now? Yes, a few more pictures, he wants to take.
Well, this is unusual. I don't do this for applause, I do it for working for a cause.
We know that.
And you guys do too. Congratulations on working, being the only city in Villa Park that works without a salary.
We thank you for everything, Bill. You know, I have some proclamations this month, but I think I want to start with making this month Service Club Month. This month, we're recognizing the many service clubs that support our city. I remember moving here in late 1999, and Elizabeth and my indoctrination into the city was through our service clubs. We owe so much to all of our service clubs who nurture every walk of life and age in our community. Volunteering is important because it enables people to help and serve others in a selfish way, selfish way. When individuals take the initiative to help people in the community and support philanthropic causes, it can improve the community as a whole by creating tighter bonds and forming lasting relationships, as you can well see by the photographs and everybody and the camaraderie and so forth that took place tonight. I know for me, this is certainly the case for these organizations that support our community, and some are represented here tonight, and we want to thank and recognize their efforts here in Villa Park. These are certainly not all that support us, but we do have some representatives from our various support organizations that I would like to recognize. So, let's start off with ladies first. Villa Park Women's League, Risa. Risa is the president of Villa Park Women's League, and I have to tell you, we've been affiliated, my wife and I have been affiliated with the Women's League since start here. They introduced us to this city, and we love this city as a result of the, you know, interaction that Elizabeth and I have had through the Women's League. So, I have a proclamation here for you, along with some of the others, and I'll give them to you in just a minute, but stay right there, okay? Stay right there. The next, which I'm proud to be a part of also, is the Villa Park Rotary. So Charlie Gallagher is the president of Villa Park Rotary. And I do these together, because last week, they had an amazing event, a fundraising event, that they jointly did for our community and for the people that, you know, support outside of our community as well. We raised quite a bit of money for these causes, and I really do appreciate the work and effort that you all put into that event and put it on that night. So, and Charlie, love seeing you every Thursday, buddy. Next is our Community Service Foundation, Mr. Ed Carter, who is the president. Where is Ed? Ed, I have to tell you, the foundation does an awful lot for this community, you know, concerts in the park, we do parades, we do all kinds of things to bring our community together. I think this year, at the Fourth of July Parade, was one of the largest that I've seen in a long, long time, it brought a lot of families and children and so forth, and we really do appreciate the contribution that you and the entire board has for our city, and all the things that you do. We appreciate you. And last but not least, but Friends of Villa Park Library, Mr. Bill Baker, who is the chairperson. Who is also a Rotarian. Bill, you know, I've sat on the board with you, and I can't tell you how much I appreciate the effort that you put forth to help our library continue to thrive here in Villa Park, and the things that we do for our young people and so forth through the programs that the library has to offer. So we thank you and the board for your service, and hope will continue for a long, long time.
Speaking of the board, I think we have a board member or two present. Would you stand up? If I know you're here. Okay. The three of us are here. Thank you.
And I don't want to take away from any of the other service organizations that weren't represented here tonight, because they're an awful lot. They really do a lot for our community, and we cannot tell you how much we really appreciate everything that you do. So I have proclamations for each one of you, and then we'll get a picture with the council at the same time.
Can I bring up the board?
Yeah, yeah.
So, the board, come up, we'll put a picture.
Half our Rotary is already up here, so.
Well, thank you. Risa, I think you need to join Rotary and continue, you're attending our breakfast meetings. You're a great addition.
We'll make her an honorary.
I think we should.
I think so, too. Half the Rotary.
Wait, I should stand next to her sometime. Let me stand right next to her. You can hold it for the wider, takes it out so they don't see it. Is this everybody? Ted, what are you doing back there? You and Steve.
Bill, why are you still seeing that? Bill, Bill.
We really had a minute. Just got a moment. We had a moment.
Bill.
Here we go, Bill. It's all going in the newspaper. Louise, Louise. You read that? No, there. All right. There we go.
Come here, Louise here.
Oh, you got it?
You got it.
One, two, three. Mike, can't hold it in that long. One more, one more. One more. It's your honor, your honor. I'll do it later. Okay. Well, actually, two. I have, this month is World Alzheimer's Month, so I have a proclamation for the Alzheimer's group. They weren't able to attend tonight, but I have a proclamation for them. Ashley, would you make sure that they get it? And also, Fire Prevention Week. Chief, I've got a proclamation here that says, "Fire is a serious public safety concern both locally and nationally, and homes are where people are at the greatest risk in fire. And when cooking is the leading cause of house and fires, injuries in the nation is causing nearly half of all the home structures at fires. So we should all take very care and a lot of caution with regards to how we prevent fires around our home and outside of our home." I don't know if you want to add anything? This 30-second.
I don't need to, I can give you your meeting back tonight. Like I normally do later. So thank you, I just want to thank you and the council certainly for recognizing Fire Prevention Week. That's been a longstanding tradition since President Coolidge in 1925. So, just appreciate it, and I would just direct all residents to ocfa.org, like we normally do for, this year's theme is Cooking Safety, but for just a large amount of public safety in the home, I just directed the citizens of Villa Park to go to ocfa.org. Thank you.
I appreciate it. I appreciate it. Thank you. [applause] So, in my continuing role as treasurer, I must correct the mayor. I actually have three children, and the one you left out is here tonight. My apologies.
And she's the closest. She's in Orange, the others in Texas and Connecticut.
Thank you for that, Bill. We appreciate that, and we have some things here for you. First of all, again, I'd like to thank you for your service to this country, and we have a pin here that recognizes that you are a veteran for our country.
Thank you.
And we also have a distinguished citizen pin for you, as well as a certificate showing our gratitude for everything that you do for our city.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Picture with the council.
Sorry. I think we're for Rotary. Oh, of course, it's video. Come on, sorry.
Can we get the council?
Yeah. But I also have some other folks here that I'd like to take a picture with. Okay. Brendan.
I'm Brendan Moeller, the Military Veteran Liaison from Congresswoman Youngkin's office. So I just wanted to, first off, say, "How can I be like you when I grow up?" So, first off. I'm a Rotarian as well, so I appreciate that, your commitment to service of the community. But on behalf of Congress, I wanted to present you with a Congressional Recognition Certificate. I'm an Army veteran, so I'm going to say "Go Navy," but I'm going to stop short of saying "Good Army." So, I can't go that far, but congratulations, sir.
Thank you very much. [applause]
And Bill, Chairman Dono Agar, could be here tonight, or Pat, who is our manager, she took the photo shot, they have reactions to it. So, they extend their gratitude for everything, wish you well, and they will have some more certificates for you.
Okay. All right. So, let's take a picture with the council.
Sure.
Brendan?
Yeah.
We do have one more, I'm sorry, I forgot.
Should we do the picture first?
No, no.
Okay, hi everyone, my name's Paulina Alvarez, I'm the field representative for Assembly Member Philip Chen. It's an honor to recognize you for the Distinguished Citizen of the Month. You're a great asset to the community, your vision, your leadership, your knowledge is forever honored and noticed.
Thank you.
Yes, of course.
[applause] All right. Take one with the council, and bring your hand up.
Get one more. Get one more.
I'll do it later. Okay. Do I have one proclamation left? I have, this month is World Alzheimer's Month, so I have a proclamation for the Alzheimer's group. They weren't able to attend tonight, but I have a proclamation for them. Ashley, would you make sure that they get it? And also, Fire Prevention Week. Chief, I've got a proclamation here that says, "Fire is a serious public safety concern both locally and nationally, and homes are where people are at the greatest risk in fire. And when cooking is the leading cause of house and fires, injuries in the nation is causing nearly half of all the home structures at fires. So we should all take very care and a lot of caution with regards to how we prevent fires around our home and outside of our home." I don't know if you want to add anything? This 30-second.
I don't need to, I can give you your meeting back tonight. Like I normally do later. So thank you, I just want to thank you and the council certainly for recognizing Fire Prevention Week. That's been a longstanding tradition since President Coolidge in 1925. So, just appreciate it, and I would just direct all residents to ocfa.org, like we normally do for, this year's theme is Cooking Safety, but for just a large amount of public safety in the home, I just directed the citizens of Villa Park to go to ocfa.org. Thank you.
I appreciate it. I appreciate it. Thank you. [applause] Hey, Jay? Want to come up and?
I want a proclamation. We think you're special.
I proclaim next week Crime Prevention Week.
Okay.
And my deputies will be celebrating.
Okay.
So, well, good evening. To report back, it was kind of an interesting month, very good in a lot of ways, and interesting in other ways. As far as like property crimes, burglaries, thefts, no burglaries at all for over a month now, so really good. And for 911 calls, about steady, 26. Total calls for service, 236, which about half of those, which is a little uptick, were actually, you know, calls for service from the community, which I did a deep dive on that, and a lot of them were suspicious circumstances calls, which is exactly what we've been trying to preach. And not a one of them turned out to be anything bad, except for another positive police contact, but the people are seeing things and they're calling, so that is actually a very interesting number and a very encouraging number as far as I'm concerned. Most of the stuff is, you know, alarm audibles and stuff like that, stuff that's, false alarms. We had one family kind of violence thing, not a domestic violence, but kind of a family violence thing, kind of an isolated incident towards the end of August, but we handled that. The interesting thing has been, since school started, traffic incidents are back up again, right? So, very minor, nothing speed-related. A couple in front of the high school that our deputy actually observed himself, so he was in the wrong spot, or the right spot for that matter, but all the other ones were very minor distracted driving type things, not speed. Our sites are picking up, our deputies did almost 90 traffic stops, and they issued almost 50 citations. So the numbers are kind of upticking up as we're hiring, we're kind of doing a different model with our motor officers, trying to do, rather than just have a certain amount of, a chunk of time on one day, we're trying to spread it out over time, right? So, but, I mean, my main tip that I'm kind of seeing on trends is these distraction-type thefts and burglaries. These thieves, they prey on, you know, elderly and people that are not paying attention. We have to preach to our people that they got to pay attention. Purses that are left unattended, and it's not just happening here, it actually hasn't happened here in a while, but it's happening in our surrounding area, and we're getting the calls from the people when they get home, and then they discover that their stuff's been used at multiple stores, because they didn't even realize it was missing until they got home. So they have to minimize these opportunities for these thieves. They are watching you all the time. And guess what? Villa Park has nice things, and the people here have, you know, money in their purse and in their wallets. People are going to come here to try to, you know, victimize us, and we have to do what we can to minimize those opportunities, so. But overall, a really good month. Reminder, we're going to do another prescription drug take-back day towards the end of October. I'm sure we'll be putting that stuff out. The last one was very, very successful. But other than that, I'm open up to any questions or concerns you guys have?
I have a question. So, just the minor traffic incidents that you were referring to in front of Villa Park High School, would that happen to be the driveway when you're by the, you know, red zone right in front of the school, and then you go to that one driveway where you can only turn right? Is that where some of the accidents are?
I'd have to do a little more research on it to see exactly where it was at, but I could get that answer real easy.
Well, just the only reason why I say, and that's something, you know, maybe we can talk about as a council, is Parents Park right up to the exit of that driveway, and it's really hard, you can only go right, but it's really hard to see if a car's coming, so I've almost been hit there, but something to kind of, maybe we could start a discussion on. That was it.
What I wanted to mention, we had the opioid town hall last week too, which was, I said, I think we had a lot of good questions that came out of that, and I said, I know that we're actually pulling people over, or passing through Villa Park a lot, and we're taking a lot of drugs off the street still, so it was good to see that event.
Fantastic.
I don't know if you wanted to mention anything about that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything? Anything? Yeah, I see things on Nextdoor, on Facebook, you know, about things happening in the shopping center with regards to the distractions and things of that nature, and the lifting of the wallets and things like that. I'm concerned that people aren't calling you and reporting these things, and I just want us all to encourage people to call when something goes on. These folks use distraction tactics, you know, they have one person walk up to you and strike up a conversation while the other person is taking your valuables from you and things of that nature. So, I just, you and I talked a little bit about it the other night, and I'm just hoping that people will report it, so that we can start to build a trend and look out for certain things that are going on. And I know you're working on things too as well.
Absolutely. Like I said, I know, we've talked to people that are victims of this, sometimes they feel embarrassed, but if they don't report it, it's very hard for us to drive our tactics to respond to that type of threat, right? We don't like to go off of rumors and stuff, we like to go off of raw, real data. So if we get those people calling, even if it's just, like you said, even if they didn't actually successfully take something, or if something just didn't feel right, that just gives us the more intel that we can use to build cases against these people, because, like I said, yeah, they weren't successful here, but maybe they were successful somewhere else, and it builds a case for us, and my investigators do amazing work behind the scenes, and this just helps us put those people away a lot longer.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Anything else?
See something, say something.
Absolutely, sir.
Thank you. Chief?
All right. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Protem, and Honorable Counsel. Thank you for the opportunity to share with you again. Over the last month, we had 116 units that were dispatched to 38 incidents within the city of Villa Park. This month's focus is on senior fall prevention. Every 11 seconds, an elderly assault is treated in the emergency room for a fall. Falls are the leading cause of fatal injury and the most common cause of non-fatal trauma-related hospital admissions among senior adults. In an effort to protect one of our most vulnerable populations, we have launched a Senior Fall Prevention Safety Campaign that you may have seen on social media. We just asked residents to follow recommendations to reduce their risk of falls and just to strengthen them overall and increase their health. Chief?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Pro Tim and Honorable Counsel. Thank you for the opportunity to share with you again. Over the last month, we had 116 units that were dispatched to 38 incidents in the city, within the city of Villa Park. This month's focus is on senior fall prevention. Every 11 seconds, an elderly assault is treated in the emergency room for a fall. Falls are the leading cause of fatal injury and the most common cause of non-fatal trauma-related hospital admissions among senior adults. In an effort to protect one of our most vulnerable populations, we have launched a senior fall prevention safety campaign that you may have seen on social media. We just asked residents to follow recommendations to reduce their risk of falls and just to strengthen them overall and increase their health. I'll read a few of those exercises that might improve your balance and strength such as Tai Chi or yoga, certainly making your home safer. I think we can all attest to, we have places in our homes that we look at probably regularly. I know I do. And I look at a corner, something sticking out of a corner, knowing that I'm going to fall eventually if I don't take care of it. So, certainly urge everyone to take the opportunity to look at those a little bit harder. And if you can't fix those yourselves, reach out for help with a family member, hire a handyman or a contractor to come and take care of those things. Grab bars outside the shower or tub, for instance, non-slip mats in your bathrooms, replacing throw rugs or carpet that are unsafe, and then handrails along your, both sides of your hallways, for instance. This has been an ongoing issue for years. I was in our EMS section and I would attend regular meetings throughout the county and it seemed like senior falls were among the top of the topics of discussion, even going back a couple of years ago. In regard to that, this last month, we've had, we had seven falls. 21 units responded to seven fall incidents in the city of Villa Park. So, certainly if you have more questions, again, our website, I know ocfa.org, I kind of preach that every month. There's a lot of great information, our social media. Stop by the fire station if you have questions and certainly any of our personnel that are at the stations would be happy to reach out or to offer any assistance or to help where we can, or at least guide our residents in the right direction. Lastly, I didn't get a chance to mention it, with the Fire Prevention Week proclamation on October 14th to kind of end Fire Prevention Week, all of our, there will be open houses at 28 of our fire stations. Fire Station 23 will be one of those stations. So, I just encourage residents to stop by, bring their families to the station that day between the hours of 10:00 and 1:00. We're also using that opportunity as the kickoff to the Spark of Love Toy Drive this year. So, just encourage residents, if they typically donate to that, or if they're led to donate to that, to bring an unwrapped toy to the fire station and drop it off that day. That concludes my report. I'm available for any questions, if you have any.
Questions, comments?
No question, but can I supplement? So, talking, as you know, I'm Senior Citizen Advisory Council trustee. You mentioned about, you know, installing the bars or else maybe there's some other, like maybe even a ramp or whatever. On Office on Aging, which is also through Orange County Community Resources, they have access there to programs that they will come out and install those minor things free of charge for seniors. So, maybe to help supplement what you said.
Great information. Yeah, thank you. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate it. At this time, we will review comments from members of the public to address any off agenda items within the subject managed jurisdictions of the council, provided that no action may be taken on off agenda items unless authorized by law. We will also be reviewing public comments on each agenda item. Steve, is there anyone that would like to present or wrote in from the public for a comment at this time?
Yes, Kathy Tracy.
Hi, Kathy.
Hi. Good evening, everybody. City Council Mayor.
Introduce yourself for the.
Katherine Tracy, but Kathy's fine. I just want to talk to you guys and say thank you for the past council and the present too for doing our streets. This is my 13th time, but I'm not complaining this time. So, I just want to say thank you so much. Talking about falls, there will be not any falls on Churchill and Squires if I can help it because our streets were crumbling. So, thank you so much. I just wanted to say, there's one thing I wanted to suggest after getting our streets done, they looked so good. It was wonderful, but they were no, there were no signs saying do not drive on there and delivery trucks and everything was going on it and after working so hard to get the streets to get done, there was a lot of grooves and everything that were accumulating shortly after and they didn't put any signs, please do not drive on it for, a lot of us were parked on center just to avoid that, but delivery trucks, they don't know and there was no sign. So, I called the Onyx guy and they came back with a roller and did the best they could. It was a very hot day and did, tried to do the best, but you could still see a lot of damage where that happened. So, for the future streets that you guys might be doing, maybe you can suggest to just have them stay off of it for at least one day for it to kind of set up a little bit because I think it's that rubber thing that they put in the street in the asphalt that causes it to be a little stickier. So, that's why their tires, anytime that they went this way, that way, you could tell where they did that. So, other than that, it looks great. I just wanted to give you that one little tidbit just for the future streets.
Thank you.
Yeah. Thanks again for on behalf of the people on Squire and Churchill. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Does that mean you won't come back and see us again?
Yeah, well, I learned a lot coming to these meetings, actually. I learned about variances. I had no clue what those were. So, thank you. Oh, hi.
What was your comment?
Oh, I'm really sad.
I never missed it.
Oh, okay. You'll have to watch it on TV.
Okay, now we'll, now we'll move into our Agenda As Public Hearings. Our first hearing is to review.
Real quick, I think she wanted.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Donna, did you want to?
Can I make a comment?
Sure.
I'm so sorry.
It's okay.
Thank you so much. I've had a long day, so pardon me, I'm late. I saw Kathy in the audience and so I jumped in the car. I assume she talked about the paving of Churchill and Squires and Dodson Way was also paved and so just wanted to say thank you, but also I did want to just make a suggestion. Some of the communication from the paving company was not very good and we actually had some heavy trucks come on our road right after it got paved and it put divots and kind of digs into the pavement. So, that was kind of unfortunate after all the, you know, all of the work to make it happen and then to have issues come up afterwards. And some neighbors were told it was okay to drive immediately and others were told wait a couple more hours. So, if they could just be a little clearer about that, that would be helpful, but thank you. The biggest message is thank you. Also, as part of that project, the Serrano Avenue area was paved and the new crosswalk was implemented and I had a chance to do some observing down there and the community is still adapting. I see some, we removed two stop signs in the process, so we still have parents stopping where there used to be a stop sign and some of the students are not using the button to activate the warning lights. However, it really improved the movement of cars through the area. The light at the high school is keeping cars flushed out and so even though they're still in an adapting mode, I think there was an improvement and I estimated it between 25% to 30% improvement of the time it took to clear the, to clear the area. So, I was really happy to see that and it was a long time coming. I mean, we've spent years trying to make little improvements here and there and this one was, it was a good one and I expect that we may still continue to see improvements as everyone gets used to the fact that there's no stop signs anymore. So, thank you very much for supporting that project and I consider it a big success and thank you to Steve Franks for making that happen. Thank you.
Nice to see you. Haven't seen you for a long time.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you.
Okay, now, anybody else, Steve?
No, sir.
Okay. Now, we'll move into our Agenda As Public Hearings. Our first hearing is to review, to waive reading and full of all ordinances and resolutions on the agenda. I will now open the hearing. Staff, please give the report.
Thank you. This is the monthly item we have to help us conduct expeditious and effective council meetings. We'd recommend approval.
Sir, moved.
Second.
Moving second.
Passed by a 4-0 vote with one absent.
Okay, now, we will consider our consent calendar. All items on the consent calendar are considered routine and are usually enacted by one motion approving the recommended action list on the agenda. Any member of the city council, staff, or the public may request an item be removed from the consent calendar for discussion or separate item. Council members, are any items four through nine that you would like to remove from the council, from the consent agenda? None? None?
No.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
I'd like to pull eight.
Oh, sorry.
I'd like to pull eight.
Eight?
So, we'll do four, five, six, seven, and nine. Do I hear a motion for that?
I'll move.
Move?
Second.
Second?
On the balance.
Passed by a 4-0.
Okay. The reason I pulled number eight is because I just thought for informational purposes that we should highlight what this is all about for members of the public who may not be here tonight or whatever. So, Steve, if you would, could you please give us an update on this particular one?
Sure. This is a legal issue, so I'm going to kind of defer to our city attorney, Todd.
Okay.
Yes, Mayor, Honorable Mayor and Counsel. The, all the cities, counties, districts got served with a complaint against PERS based upon how PERS, a guy up in Lake County, which is somewhere up in Northern California, after you're the age of 40 and if you retire on disability, there's a certain calculation that PERS does as far as your disability payment. And the argument is you don't get the full rights of your pension benefits. PERS is the statewide governmental entity retirement system that Villa Park is in. And so, he filed a claim with basically the State of California Claims Board through PERS, but he served all the other cities and says, this applies to all you other cities, counties, everybody's in PERS as well, in case you have everybody that would fall within this category. So, obviously the city doesn't have anybody over 40 years old, but we didn't know what to really do with this. Is this a claim against the city? He said, you know, they might sue us, they might not, you know, who knows? So, the safer course of action, just talking with city attorney folk and actually with our JPA insurance entities was just to deny the claim even though we don't know it is a claim and because then technically instead of waiting two years, somebody would have two years to sue us, now they only have six months and we're not going to get sued. It's not, but it's just really safer and better to do it that way. So, that's what this is about and the recommendation is to deny the claim.
Okay. Thank you. I move for approval then.
Second.
Please vote.
Passed by a 4-0 vote.
New business. Our first item of new business regarding the approval of a consultant contract and personnel actions related to provision of planning services and plan check services. Staff, please give the report.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a rather complicated item, a long-going. As you're well aware, we have the responsibility to planning and plan check services in the city of Villa Park and that includes developing the housing element. Since I want to say 2017, we've been contracting fortunate with Sagecrest, who has been an excellent partner and stepped forward when we had our previous contractor basically defaulted in the contract. And Sagecrest stepped forward and has been a wonderful partner for us, allowed us to keep Ray Pasquaz, our planning manager, and Amy, the principal, is in the audience there. Been very appreciative of their efforts. They've had minimal increases over the year, minimal if any increase over the years. However, their contract expires at the end of this month, so in the course of a process, we decided, well, you know, we had some initial discussions and I thought, well, we really need to check and test the waters. We tested the waters and I'm not going in. They're pretty wet and cold. So, we would be paying a lot more. Fortunately, Amy took my call after she had bid and said, yeah, I kind of told you that was going to be the case anyway, but they've, I've been willing to step forward and provide, continue to provide services at a reduced rate. However, it's still a significant increase for us. So, that being said, we're fortunate to keep Ray here, but she's giving us the ability to sort of tone down the number of hours. At the same time, we'll agree to increase the rate. So, it's kind of a mutual compromise and I, again, I want to appreciate Amy's willingness to talk about this and come up with a solution that worked. Now, what does that do? We reduce Ray's time from 12 hours to eight hours a week. That's kind of scary because we have people coming in five days a week for services. Fortunately, we have in-house, sort of an in-house intern expert, not expert, an intern student who's Justin Urbansky, who's done a wonderful job for us. He's not here tonight because there's no CUP or variance, thank you, on the agenda. But anyway, Justin will be, is working through his master's degree in planning and I talked to him at length and said, you know, Justin, how would you feel about us bringing you onboard, expanding you as a regular position and bringing you onboard and allowing you to come forward and step, you know, sort of have your entry level job and we're not going to pay you at the rate that they're paying out in their sector, but it will give you the experience that you've never, you know, that's really good for you. He said that would be a wonderful opportunity for him. He will only be able to work 30 hours for the next nine months while he finishes his degree, but in the truth, fairness, I wanted to open up and say that we'd establish a 40-hour position and the opportunity, should he be interested, we could pursue that down the road with him. What it does is it allows us to have a presence in planning questions five days a week without having, and a lot of these are routine questions that are just, what's the rules about? What's the zoning requirement? How far is the setback? And all those things. You know, if you listen to Justin on the phone every day, it's a lot of just routine type of things that we'll have a presence for. So, it gives us the ability, when we net out his position after detracting, after, and dealing with the increase for Ray and everything, we are, I want to say about 36, 35,000 difference, an increase. So, I think we're going to basically expand the availability, albeit not as experienced with Ray, but we'll expand the presence of a planning question person that can answer. We'll also retain the services of Sagecrest should we need them, which is, we're very fortunate there. And also, it will allow us the opportunity to use the position to help us on the next phase of our housing element, which we know we have to complete to get certification. So, that being said, we're recommending Ray being brought down to, the contract with Sagecrest being brought down from 12 to eight hours, added increased rate that we both agreed on and then we would create, we would eliminate the intern position and create a 40-hour position with benefits, which is still cheaper than a contracted rate if we were to go out. Secondarily, as I mentioned, we have plan check services. Sagecrest has been the primary, I want to say the primary building plan check groups we do. We have a 30-day turnaround that we try and do, which is for most cities, a target that's unattainable, but we do it. We do an excellent job. If you go to some cities, it's six months, it's ridiculously long. We use three firms. Sagecrest has been our primary firm. I believe their contractor is a former, the county building official or I believe so. So, we want to retain them. They have agreed to, Sagecrest again, Amy stepped forward and said, we'll agree to continue that service. You remember, we increased the other two contracts with VCA and Milad to $30,000. So, what we'd like to do is have another contract with Sagecrest for $30,000 to allow us to continue them when we rotate them, but it allows us to meet that 30-day timeframe, which we're really, is important for the developers, the residents, et cetera, so we don't have lots waiting for construction for months and months and months and months. Anyway, so we are, we're in the process, we were negotiating with them, so we'd like to increase, a part of the contract with Sagecrest would include that element built into it. So, what we're recommending is basically, we'd like to have a five, I'm sorry, a three-year contract which would cover through December, through September 2026 and then two one-year options with Sagecrest for eight hours plus the plan check services at the designated rates as shown in the thing, with the same scope and work of, and conditions that we have currently, with the ability and the authorization to have mutual approval of any increase, the CPI increases between the contractor and myself on an annual basis. So, during that contract period. So, one of the issues that came up is that Amy had said to me, hey, Steve, the CPI is going up and you haven't allowed us to increase over the years because we don't have in our contract. Well, I think that's unfair to a contract provider who's a partner. We need to be able to negotiate and say this is okay. So, again, we'll be doing that. So, the contract with them will be at 120 hours a year, an hour for their planning official and, planning manager and for $30,000 for plan check at 110 hours, $110 an hour there. Then, we will be deleting, our recommendation is to delete a 20-hour part-time intern position and create the 40-hour planning assistant position that would be effective at the end of October, which would allow me to go through the recruitment process to make sure I've got, you know, everyone's interested and it all works out. That being said, I think this is an efficient way to increase services, to retain expertise that we are very fortunate to have in Villa Park and to be able to maintain a partnership with, I think, a firm that's been very helpful to us along the way and been with us and understands. There's a lot of, as you can imagine, projects that happens, you know, we don't get a lot of new development, we get a lot of remodels and redoing. So, to have people that, projects can go on several years. To have that kind of continuity is very, very important to know, otherwise you're starting all over explaining that. So, that's, that's sort of, the last element of planning is we have the housing element in the next phase. So, we've talked to the various, during the bidding process, we did, we got some hourly rates and we've also talked to Kim Lee Horn, who is our current provider. So, next month, I hope to bring back a contract that helps us identify the next phase of, so we can complete our housing element certification. So, that's kind of planning in a nutshell, but based on these actions, I think this gets us through at least the next five years in a very stable way that provides us continuity and an effective way to provide services in the level of, that the residents deserve and expect from Villa Park.
Okay. Thank you, Counsel. Go ahead.
I just want to thank you for the incredible amount of work you've done to try to limit the hit to our coffers. I appreciate, obviously, Sagecrest's participation in that process and their willingness to work with us and partner with us through the years. I just want to go on record and say I support this. I think it's the best of all moves and to keep Justin onboard. Ray's been doing a great job of training him up over the past few months and he's a great asset to the city. The one thing that I would. The one thing that I would say, and perhaps this is a discussion for a future date, is unfortunately, we'll have to pass on these costs to our residents, and our fees probably need to go up accordingly.
We have a study, as you recall, about three months ago, I want to say, we hired a firm to help us update our things, because the mandated responsibilities in planning have ever, ever increased, the state mandates of what you have to do. So that was something that we already sort of anticipated, so the timing of this is perfect, if you will, or fortuitous, or whatever the word might be, that allows us to adjust those rates. So it's always been my philosophy that those who create the costs ought to have to pay for them. So in the case of a developer who's having to, you know, we have to do extra planning work, the rest of the city shouldn't have to be paying for that. It should be those people who are benefiting them from the project. So exactly what you're saying, we're going to be able to incorporate those at the timing right now. I believe our hope is to come back at the end of this calendar year with the rate adjustments, so that we can incorporate the adjustments. But again, unfortunately, the state externally has, has sort of heaped upon us some additional requirements and some, you know, SP nine, SP ten, all those sorts of reviews and processes and timeframes that we now have to have, which is sort of problematic and requires a lot of extra effort. So that's something that we'll be incorporating in. So you're right, the rates will have to be, you know, the fees will have to be adjusted. So, but we're in a, in a mode to get those adjusted.
Thank you. Counsel, one? Anything?
So echo a lot of what Mayor Protem Rosini, but I have two questions. One is for Ray. Is, I mean, you're reducing your hours here. Are you, are you okay with that? Your thing won't talk?
We'll make it work.
Okay. Okay. And then the second one, speaking of the continuity, and again, Justin is, I think, in a great position, especially, gosh, if I were him, it'd be perfect. My concern is, after those nine months, when he graduates and has his master's, would he be willing, or is there a discussion on the table about perhaps him committing to, you know, an additional couple of years? Because I'm sure someone would want to grab him right up, and seeing that we're a small city, small budget, we really aren't very, I don't think, you know, we can compete with the, you know, the oranges of the world, and the Laguna Nogales of the world, and my concern would be, this would be great for the next nine months, and then he graduates and gets a really spectacular job offer.
Well, one of the things that we set, because I said, okay, now, what do I set the planning assistant rate? He went for an interview, and it's just, I don't, he's, he's been open, the rate for recruitment that's currently going on in Seal Beach is the rate at which, and he was very interested that we would be hiring him. So unfortunately, with the talent we have, and I speak of the people on my right, are very talented and young, and they're going to go on to another career, and, you know, Villa Park will be something that's a stepping stone, I hate to say that, but three to five years for a young person in a career is about what you're going to be able to get in an entry level type of thing, and that's where we are. So the reality is, is he going to move on at some point? I wouldn't be surprised if Sagecrest hires him at some point.
We've got to wait.
And rightfully, they'd be smart to do so, but candidly, we're going to benefit from those times that we have him. He's interested in staying here, because he lives in North Tustin, you know, so his is a, you know, he's very interested in staying with here for years, for several years. I mean, he's not going to make a lifelong commitment, and he didn't promise his firstborn child or anything like that, but, but he is willing to stay.
There's still time.
Yeah. And, and he's, you know, the training is, there's no, there's no training beyond what Ray is already doing, and they, they have long discussions about projects and how to do things, et cetera. So we're very fortunate, but again, a young person, you know, you're, you're not going to stop people moving on to greater, bigger, better things. But I think we tried to be as competitive at the entry level as we can, and that's about all I can be able to offer somebody, is make the working conditions and the environment. And fortunately, I can say without a doubt, the exposure that the council members have, that he has access to the council members, the things he's doing are tremendous experience that he will not get elsewhere. So he has that, for the, you know, he's going to put that in his resume over the next couple of years. So it's in his best interest to stay here for a couple of years. After that, you know, the sky's the limit, and I expect talent to be promoted. But being able to talk to you, make presentations to council members, have you guys come in and treat him, and the attitude, very candidly, that the council treats him and the rest of staff here is greatly appreciated, because they don't walk in, and I don't see the backs stiffen up of our, of our staff, and I don't see them freaking out like, oh my God, here comes a council member, I can't do it. They're, they're all appreciative, you talk to all of them, you treat them with respect and dignity, and so pretty much, we're doing what we can, but we're going to lose them eventually. And I, I give that, I give, that's a given.
No, and I, and I know that, and I guess I'm just trying to mitigate, you know, because we have a great, great group of, of individuals, and kind of just hope that maybe on conversation wise, that, you know, he would at least hopefully stay for a couple of years after he graduates, and maybe he'll love it here so much, he'll stay forever.
Well, I, I hope that.
Make my house. Yeah, you never know.
The chemistry, and it's something that I've, this is the best group of professional people I've worked with, I can say without a doubt. And I've had forty-three years of experience in government, so I think I speak with a little bit of experience here, that these people get along, and I, I used to a little worry about being out in the office or whatever. I don't worry now, they don't need me half the time. I mean, I'm, I'm sort of like on the periphery, but, but that's a credit to them, and that's a credit to what they're doing. They can respond to your calls, they're not afraid of your calls, they're not afraid of residents dealing with them, whatever, and I really appreciate that. So I, I think we've developed a very great chemistry with some really young talent, and as that, you know, these are going to look back and say, that was a good group we had at some point, and then they're going to move on. And with that, I hope they won with a very positive image and a memory of Villa Park, because I think it's a great place to work.
Yep. Agreed.
And Mayor, we have had, you know, interns work their way up to city manager. I mean, Jared was an intern.
Yeah, Jared was one.
And Domer.
Good example.
Domer was never an intern.
He was an intern.
Here?
Well, we've had two.
So Ray, you're, you're a part of the family here, and we do appreciate all that you do for this city. You've been here for quite a while, you've been a good partner, you've been a good friend. You know, you're always cheerful, you always have a smile on your face, and it just, you know, people love you when they come in here and start to work with you, and we hope this will continue for a long time to come. But I just want to say thank you for all that you do for this city.
Thank you, Mayor.
And I want to thank you too, for what you've done for that young man, to get him ready for this position, because you have groomed him and done a good job of preparing him. And when he sits down, he's very thoughtful about what he does and says, and I really do appreciate that, and I know that comes from you. And Steve Boe, because both of you are good mentors for that young man. And I think, you know, when people recognize that as young people, they, they tend to stay longer, because they're nurtured, and they're given the ability to grow and learn and, and do things that they might not do in an environment where it's constantly like this, you know? So I appreciate you, and we appreciate you. You're a part of our family, and hope you will be for a long time to come.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Anything else? Do we have a motion on this matter?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Can we vote on it, please?
Passes by a four zero. Thank you.
Okay. So our next item of new business is regarding the Third Amendment to the agreement with Rutan Tucker for the provision of Todd Meister.
Yes, thank you. Believe it or not, I didn't realize this, but Rutan and Tucker has provided our city attorney services since nineteen seventy-eight. So that's an incredibly long run. I didn't realize Todd was that old, but.
Almost as old as you.
Yeah, almost. Anyway, we are very, our contract will expire. Last contract was in twenty nineteen. At that time, we actually did go out to bid, I believe, in twenty nineteen, and we received no other bids. So I asked Todd for, and he, you know, came back with a, what I believe, based on my experience with planning, was probably a reasonable salary, I mean, a reasonable contract increase. It made, it's candidly, made me rethink a little bit about contracting versus in-house, because you start realizing you're at, you're at the will of the contractor who can raise rates, et cetera. But anyway, that being said, Todd is a tremendous addition. I talk to him probably a couple of times a week, and never once, as he said, I don't have time for you, never once, as he said, I can't, I can't provide the service. And I realized Villa Park, we, our stipend or regular retainer each month is forty-nine hundred, forty-two hundred a month now, but he recommended to go to forty-nine hundred. It's just not a lot of money when you're talking, talking to attorneys. So we're very fortunate to have that. Todd would have the increase from twenty till twenty twenty-seven, with no annual CPI increases, which you're never going to find if we go out to bid. So we are increasing to, which is about a sixteen point seven percent increase, but if you spread that over the next four years, which this contract will lead, it's, it evens out pretty well. So we're pretty fortunate on that end of things. And again, the continuity that we have, and Todd is also able to get the services of Rutan and Tucker. I deal with a lot of other city managers, and some of them, I talk to them, I think, that's not even close to, their city attorneys have given advice, it's not even close to reasonable. And I talked to Todd, and he says, that's not going to fly, or whatever. We've been able to avoid costly lawsuits, being able to do a lot of things because of Todd, so, and Rutan. They also help us with the trash contracts and things. Patrick Munoz is Rutan, and so we've been very fortunate, again, to have a really good partner in Rutan, and they're willing to stay with us. I, you know, between you and me, I don't know how they're making much money on the deal, but they're, they're doing it, and they're willing to do it, so I'm not going to question. But again, I would like to recommend strongly that we continue this contract and the increase to forty-nine hundred a month, and so it's about eighty-four hundred dollars an increase, so Todd's going to take us all to dinner at some point. But anyway, I would recommend approval, and thank Todd for all the service, and just, not only that, but the advice in council that he's willing to, to give. I know he's had moments with each of you at times on issues, and he's very prompt and timely in his response about things, and it's not just these long billable hours that he's working for, but he gets you the answer you want fairly quickly and as best he can. So I appreciate it, and I recommend approval.
Okay. Any comments, questions?
I appreciate Todd. Todd always answers the phone, no matter when I call, and I know it's oftentimes thankless work. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Todd, you're one of the family members too, buddy. We appreciate all you do. You've been, at least for me, you've been here ever since I've been on council, and you've been a great advisor for me. You know, we, we talk one-on-one about some things, but also you've done a really good job of taking good care of this city and this council, and representing us in various ways. So thank you very much. So do I have a motion on this matter?
I'll move. We'll rush and boo it.
You win. Ladies first.
All right. Let's vote.
Passes by a four zero vote, so Todd can stay sitting here.
I can. And just some historical knowledge, so, yeah, our firm started in seventy-eight. My boss, my mentor, the guy who actually introduced me to my wife, and I've never forgiven him. He retired.
You're recorded.
She's watching, that's why I said that. Dinner better be ready. No. Wow, now that's going to end poorly. But, and then he retired, so I started working for the city in ninety-five, and he retired for good in two thousand and one, and that's when I became city attorney. So it's been a spell. It's been a, this was the first, I've been city attorney in multiple places, but this was the first city that actually gave me the opportunity to be the city attorney. So I'm always appreciative of Villa Park and the opportunity they gave me, that's one of the reasons, you know, I'm still here, so.
Well, we thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. Steve, it's your turn. Talk about your report.
Thank you. As you were in closed session, there's some items we're working on, that's been a little bit of time consuming. Hopefully, we'll be able to report out some things and progress we're making on that. I also wanted to say that I believe we are pretty close with some minor punch list items to our street project being completed. I would encourage people to go out and drive on the streets, because they look really nice when you do get to see them, when you're on them, and there is some different things that are happening out there, if you, that I think Donna mentioned, and I think Nicole will mention later down the road, that the, the access points and the pedestrian walkways are changed a little bit around CV, Saravilla, and we did that for a reason, and hopefully that's a much safer intersection for the pedestrians, we're trying to improve things. But we're, that, that project is about done. Interestingly enough, I have received, and you guys have been copying on a couple of them, we already have residents interested in trying to have their streets included in the next phase. So we'll be, we'll be working on identifying those and coming back to you with that as you, and I want to reiterate, we try and use the best of our ability, the pavement condition index, in identifying the streets that need to be done, or slurry sealed, or pavement, and we'll continue that approach and come back to the council. So while I appreciate all the requests, I also respect that we have a process, that we try and prioritize what needs to be done within the city. Obviously, we don't have enough to do everything all the time, but, but we do work our way through, and I think over the last couple of years, since I've been here, we've spent about five million dollars over the seven years I've been here, in improving streets and things. So I think that's a healthy sum that you can all be proud of in the council. Probably one of the more prouder things you ought to be is that you haven't borrowed a penny to do that. You've done that all with planning and using your good judgment. So I want to thank the council for adhering to that approach, because that's a very valuable. We haven't gone into debt, there's been no extra taxes or, or anything like that. The other thing too, on the housing element, I'll report that we are very pleased that we're, we've got statutory compliance, but we do not have certification. So there's another process we have to go through, and we'll be coming back next month with that. We are entering the holiday season, so you're going to see a start, a number of events happening with the foundation and things like that. I would caution you, and those people who are during the season, I noticed an uptick, and I was going to mention it, the sheriff did, ninety traffic stops in the last month, guys, that's a lot of traffic stops. So I would not speed or do any illegal U-turns or whatever in the city, and I'm very cautious of it. I warned Bill Terrance several times about being careful, because Bill scoots around a lot with that little, you know, electric car we have. But I would encourage people to drive safe, especially as we're out in the roads now, because we are taking traffic safety very seriously. And lastly, I would mention on October fifth, we are having a town hall regarding license plate readers and the technology. The sheriff will be assisting and presenting that for us. That will be from six till seven-thirty in this chamber, but I would encourage people to come and hear about the technology. It's extremely advanced, it's a, it's a, it's extremely, it sounds like it's a, not being a police officer, it sounds like a law enforcement, it's a valuable tool for law enforcement to help improve our rate, our crime rates even more. So I would encourage people, we will also try and stream it and copy it and get it on, but before we come back to the council, I wanted to make sure that people were aware of that and mark their calendars for October fifth.
Okay. Any questions or comments?
No.
Steve, I had one question. In looking through the finance, through the checks and things to approve, you know, the check and so forth, I noticed that we have incurred legal fees resulting from Republic not being responsive and not following the laws or the contract. Is there any way to recoup those fees in any way, shape, or form for them, for non-compliance of the contract?
So there are. There's potential, there's a, a number of ways to do it. One of it is through the imposition of liquidated damages. Usually that comes about, and this primarily happened a couple, maybe a month ago, is when we were having a lot of those problems, where they had some missed pickups and the like. So we track them, I think Alyssa is the one who primarily, and we keep a long spreadsheet, and once they, they miss three within a certain time period, we can assess them between two-hundred-and-fifty and a thousand dollars for each violation, and if they add up even more, you can actually terminate the contract and go out to bid. So there is a process we've been following to put us on that path to potentially recoup those fees. That's right.
Okay. Because I just noticed line items, you know, related to non-compliance of the contract, and I know that I've gotten a lot of complaints from residents, and I'm sure that the other council members have too, about late pickups and not being responsive to calls for service when, you know, they need a new trash can or whatever. Their service seems to be slipping year over year, and just.
So admittedly, Republic has had issues, and this is not a secret, in a number of North Orange County jurisdictions. I would say there in Yorba Linda, where I'm city attorney, there in Anaheim, where we're attorney, there in Anaheim, where we're special counsel, Anaheim had a big public review about a month ago, going through all of Republic's issues, Fullerton and other cities. And Republic has gone through a restructuring. The current general manager of North Orange County District, Herman, has been, he's to transfer up to Fresno, and they have a new person coming in, and they're getting their corporate involved. So they are attempting to fix it. It is not quick enough. Another issue we have is with some of their trucks. They don't, at times, have the newest trucks, and you get hydraulic spills, and they have to clean that up, and that's a mess, particularly on our nice new streets, right? So you don't want that to happen. So I know we are pushing on them to get all that changed. For your information, I believe our franchise is up in seven years, something, about, I think the same time Anaheim's is, if I remember. Yeah. At which point, the council would have plenty of options to go to different directions. But staff is hammering on them, as are all the North Orange County cities, to get that fixed. And they've incrementally shown progress, at least holistically in other cities, so hopefully, that trend will continue.
Okay, thank you.
So the other issue that you're hearing about is the street sweeping, that we don't run a contract for it. That's part of our contract that Republic pays for and has a contractor. Just this week, we had the new street sweeping contract firm in with Republic, and sort of read them the riot act, and expectations about what needs to be done, because for the longest time, we didn't even know when they would show up, or whatever, and even the routes they were supposed to do, when they were supposed to do it. So we are continuing to work with them, and Republic is responsible for that. So we, that's one of the issues, we're contacting the city attorney, make sure we are taking the steps necessary, so that should there be actions, or whatever necessary, we follow the appropriate legal path, that we're not walking down and being unable to claim, or recoup costs, or whatever type of thing there. But, but street sweeping has been an issue. I know you've received some calls, Mayor?
Yeah.
And I get them. We're trying to work on it, but that's been sort of a challenge to move. And I think, like you said, several of the cities have pretty much, other cities that are contracting with Republic in North Orange County, have sort of called Republic on the carpet.
Yeah, and the street sweeping has also been a regional problem. And what happened is, and this is in Orange County specific, this is Western United States, there's been this big conglomerate that's been buying up all these mom-and-pop street sweeping entities, and they're just in it for a cash flow thing. They don't care about, well, yeah, yeah. There's been issues with their performance, so those are trying to be solved out. But in the end, it is Republic's responsibility, because when we renegotiated the contract, we specifically put that on them, and they accepted that as part of their responsibilities.
Well, you know, it's not just your fees that I, you know, that concern me. It's the amount of staff time and the soft cost that we incur on a daily basis to track things, to do things, as a result of the fact that they're not being compliant with the contract and providing a level of service that we have, that we expect from them, so.
And part of the problem, and this will not shock you, has been the incredible amount of additional state regulation in the trash world, right? Now, you had, initially had commercial organics recycling, now the restaurants had to take their food scraps, put in a certain place, because it allegedly purportedly creates greenhouse gases. Now, you have to do it, and you have to put everything in your green waste bin, if it's food waste, right? And then that has to be taken to a separate facility for composting or potential creation of alternative forms of energy. So on the fly, I mean, the state imposes a law on entities, cities, and now we have to create whole new infrastructures, create new businesses to turn moldy bread into nuclear power. It's a bit of an exaggeration, right? And how do you do that on the fly? I mean, I met yesterday with a company out in the desert that's going to take all of the green waste and somehow compost it, and make an electrical utility. And then we, now as a city, have a responsibility to buy 30% of that back, because all of our, I don't want to get, it's very complicated. So a little bit of that is leading to some of this, very, very little, just so everybody knows.
Well, I said, I just, we're all getting the complaints, all of us are, including the staff and so forth. And it just, you know, I just bring it up, because it bothers me quite a bit. It takes time away from doing the things that you want to do, so. Okay. Thank you, Steve. Now it's time for our council member meeting attendance reports, starting with Mosquita and Vector.
So we did not have a meeting last week. We were not dark. It's just that there was a Cal Cities meeting up in Sacramento, I think it was. So we wouldn't have had a quorum. However, that doesn't mean the inspectors and stuff. And so I wanted to point out, there was a residence, I'll just give the intersection, Jacatol and Lemon, that the pool had been green. And so our inspector had, I had been notified by Mayor Petronio Mercini, but, and then I notified our inspector, and she's already, she was already on it. So she had already identified the location, and then they do like a 48-hour warrant, where they post something, and then they are by law allowed to go in. And she had already seen it, known about it, treated it, cleaned it, and just a testament to how good Orange County Mosquita Vector Control, the inspector, especially for our area, is. And if anybody has any issues, to please reach out to any one of the council, and then, or me, and we'll get it taken care of. And that was done, solved, and without, with minimal two texts, and that was it. So there is a meeting for Budget and Finance, a joint meeting with Budget and Finance, which I'm on, and the building and, and equipment, because we are revisiting the issue of perhaps vacating the Haster location and purchasing a building again. So stay tuned.
Okay. Orange County Sanitation District, that's me. I attended two meetings, the board meeting last month, along with the administrative committee report. A lot of the things that we did, we had sort of a light agenda in both of the meetings. But one of the things that did come up was, they wrote a new grant policy to go after grant monies, to do some of the things they've, the sand board has probably achieved over $10 million in grant funding since, since they started this process. And so they refined some of the protocols and some of the things that they're doing. So we passed a new policy that relates to that. The only other thing that I wanted to bring up is that the leadership team and the board will be at Mile Square Golf Course Clubhouse on October the 27th at 11:00 a.m., and will provide the public, and all of you, you are all invited to come to the event, the state of the OC Sand. So you'll get to hear from, you know, board members, as well as all the executives, about what's going on with the sanitation district and all the great things that they're doing. So I encourage, I sent the invite to Steve, and you should have it in your emails. So if you get a chance to respond and go, it'll be, I think it'll be a fun time. Orange County, 5:30?
Thank you. This Thursday, we have our monthly meetings, so I won't have anything to report on that until obviously our next meeting. But I did attend the September 13th Budget and Finance meeting. Majority of the items were consent, and I won't get into details about that, but there were two items for discussion. One was a contract award for ambulance consulting services, and Citygate was the company that won the award, or leases, is deemed to be most favorable at this point in time. And that, the, I should say, the consulting services, or RFP, is meant to assist 201 cities in particular, and the fire authority in general, with assisting all of the member cities with ambulance services, and the financial ramifications of dealing with that. That will be dealt with by the full board on Thursday. And then the second item, that was obviously approved, and will be sent to the full board for Thursday's meeting. The second item was the pre-funding of capital improvement projects, CIP projects. This stems from a very heated discussion regarding the expenditure over two helicopters, and why we've had to finance that item over time. We do have a very aggressive CIP program, but we're looking for other ways to potentially offset costs further down the road, and not get hit with such a large lump sum item all at once. That is a receive-and-file matter, and that will be dealt with by the Capital Improvement Program Committee, as well as the executive and board at a future point in time. That's all I have for the fire authority.
Thank you. Orange County Library Advisory Board, there was no meeting. Orange Unified School District, City Schools?
Unfortunately, our September meeting was canceled. But I would just like to mention, as Steve mentioned, and we heard from Ms. Buxton during public comment, that a lot of the community has probably noticed the removal of the two-stop signs at Serrano and Nichols by Saravilla. And I just wanted to add to that by letting everyone know that the principal is going to be pushing that information out to the parents through his principal's newsletter, and we are also going to be putting additional information in the feeder, so residents can look there for details. And then I'd also like to mention that the light at center in Villa Park Road has been given an additional second delay between when one side turns red and the other side turns green, which I also think will greatly impact safety at that intersection, since during the school year, we have had several incidents at that intersection. So I applaud city staff for taking the initiative on both of those items.
Oh, yeah. Steve, I can't thank you enough for what you did with that citizens group, I guess you call it, for lack of a better term, and some of the things, you know, painting the crosswalks, and the additional seconds on the lights. And I think we're even looking at blinking lights ahead of the, ahead of the, that's connected to the light changing, which is really cool. And hopefully, it'll stop, I mean, because I've gone through there and almost gotten hit several times, where people are just flying through there 50, 60 miles an hour, and they're running the red light. So, yeah, I agree, 100%. But appreciate what you're doing there. So thank you. Anything else? Okay. Law enforcement?
No meeting for law enforcement advisory, but I do want to remind everybody that October 5th, we have the LPR, or License Plate Reader Town Hall. This is, and I can speak from a professional standpoint, as well as a resident standpoint, and elected official standpoint on this, this is invaluable technology. It's technology that ensures your privacy as a driver, as a motorist, as a resident, but at the same time, gives law enforcement the kind of tool that they need to hopefully capture somebody who is either going to commit a crime, or has committed a crime. I would refer any inquiries to the sheriff's department further about their experiences on this. I know that they're going to have a very robust presentation and discussion about this on the 5th. But I can tell you that we definitely want this in our city, and any privacy concerns, please, I'm happy to discuss those offline. This is definitely not the same technology as we were looking at a few years ago. This is, this is a different animal altogether. Thank you.
Councilman Wu is not here. Hurry up and come back, buddy. We miss you, for the Community Services Foundation. So he'll give an update next month. Housing Legislative Committee?
No meeting.
Bridges?
We meet tomorrow.
And senior citizens?
So, senior citizens, we revamped the bylaws. We got, had a robust discussion. We're almost done with it. We come back in two weeks to actually vote, and hopefully, and this is important, because we were finding that sometimes we wouldn't make quorum, because the bylaws didn't have an alternate in there. So this would then allow for an alternate, which then can translate for us, too, because right now, there's no alternate. So if I can't go, you guys could go as public, but nobody could do anything. So those are getting revamped to help increase the attendance and being able to get things done. And the other thing is, and I'll give this to staff to please put in the feeder, the master plan on aging, so the Office on Aging and Orange County Community Resources is asking for anyone 55 and older to participate in a survey, and this is either if you're a caregiver, or if you're the older person with the needs. And hopefully, we'll put this in the, in the feeder, and they can scan it, and it takes it directly. But I also have some paper ones. If anybody wants to come by, I'll leave these in the front also. And there's a self-addressed stamped envelope, so you don't have to pay for stamp. And it really is helpful in being able to assess and create this master plan for aging, because as we pointed out, first, Orange County has one of the highest growing populations of older adults. We call them older adults, not seniors, and, which most of us might fit in that category here. But also, it is the fastest-growing demographic, so we need to make sure that we are able to accommodate all of our older adults as we age. So that will be in the feeder, and then up front, and that's it.
Okay, thank you. Now, we'll hear individual council member information items or announcements, starting with Councilwoman Jones?
Sure. Thank you. As you heard earlier in the meeting, I attended the Rotary Villa Park Women's League fundraiser, and it was amazing. I didn't win dinner with the mayor, but I won some other items. And so it was a great time and a great community event. I also attended the tour of the OC Animal Care Facility in Tustin, and it was wonderful to tour this new facility and see all the good work that they are doing for our community. And as the tour ended, and we were walking out, we were walking right behind someone who had just adopted an animal. So it was as if on cue, you know, we saw the happy ending, right, as we wrapped up the tour. So I really want to thank Ashley Houston and our other city staff for arranging this tour. I also attended the Fentanyl Town Hall last Thursday, sponsored by Supervisor Chairman Don Wagner, and put on by Councilwoman Miles. And there's always so much great information at this, these events. And even though I just went to the SCC event in August, they had added a couple new slides to the slideshow, which I think just really illustrates how fast this problem is evolving, and how much new information. So if you haven't been to one of these events, I strongly recommend it, and even if you have, there's always new information to get. One thing that I didn't see covered, that was covered at one I went to about six months ago, is the emerging impact of fentanyl on our seniors. As pharmaceutical costs continue to rise, many of our seniors are turning to online pharmacies, are going to Mexican pharmacies, and they're bringing back drugs that are laced with fentanyl. And at this other town hall that I had been at, they say that they, they're not even sure how much that is even detected, because in the senior population, oftentimes, it's thought that maybe it was just an accidental overdose, and they're not even testing for it. So this is something that I really want to put out there to our community, that this is not only something for, you know, teens, or anyone who's abusing drugs. It could just as easy be our senior population because of our rising drug costs. So I'd just like to let everyone know that if you can't afford your medications, there are a lot of programs out there for you, and you don't need to turn to illicit online pharmacies. I would really like to encourage everyone here to attend the Symphony on the Go, which is this Sunday at 6:00 p.m., right here at City Hall. This is a community event, put on by the Villa Park Women's League, and it's truly just a lovely event. So I would really encourage everyone to go. And then, one plug just for our feeder, you know, oftentimes up here, we just kind of drop, oh, we're putting it in the feeder. But last week, I actually talked to a very involved Villa Park resident, and I mentioned the feeder, and she had no idea what I was talking about. So it is the city weekly newsletter. It is extremely informative, and the information on how to sign up is on the city website. So if you don't already subscribe to it, I highly recommend it. So thank you so much. That's my report.
Thank you. Mayor Ratan?
Thank you. I just wanted to commend Councilwoman Miles and Chairman Wagner for putting on the Fentanyl Town Hall. I unfortunately was unable to attend due to commitments with my son. Bouncing back and forth between two practices on one night was a little challenging, and made it impossible. And I also want to thank the high school for giving us the opportunity to host that at their facility. This is an extremely important topic for our county, for our community, for our state, and for our country. Cartels are pivoting and evolving, and unfortunately, we are seeing fentanyl in drugs that you would ordinarily not see it, and it's truly tragic. So I want to echo your sentiments, and again, thank you for your leadership.
So, as you heard, we had, we had a thing. So we had the Fentanyl Town Hall, and again, Supervisor Chairman Don Wagner, and then Orange County Department of Health, OCFA, Orange County Sheriff Department, and Area for Trustee Madison Minor and myself had collaborated. This came about when they very first, when Orange County Health and Don Wagner first had their first town hall on fentanyl, I want to say it was back in November, maybe. And it was a combo between Lake Forest and Mission Viejo, and they weren't sure how many people they were going to have. And because of my interactions with the Senior Citizens Advisory Council, and a lot of the discussions at the time, they were finding that, that the seniors, as Councilwoman Jones mentioned, are going online, where they think it's a safe online pharmacy. I was asked to participate, and then once I was there, and you got the Narcan, that's when I had said to Supervisor Wagner, we need to bring this up to Villa Park. So months go by later, lots of planning, especially with Sergeant Goncali, who was the one that leads the whole program, a special thanks to him. So we had, we didn't have a ton of people. We had probably, you know, 50-ish or so. But Caroline, who works with the Orange County Department of Health, said that, you know, one of the ways that she measures the success is not by how many people are there, but how many people stay and engage. And we had gone well past our 8 o'clock deadline. And she came up to me and said that she was really pleased because of how many people nobody left, and how many people had stayed to ask further questions and get more information. And so I know that Mayor Petronio Mercini couldn't make it, but I appreciate both of you coming. And it really, I think, opened a lot of eyes of people that were there, and you got Narcan. And here's to Councilwoman Jones's point, when I was at the one in Mission Viejo... Viejo, all they had was the Narcan, the two milligrams, that was it. Now, you had an option of getting the two milligrams or the four milligrams, so they, you know, have upped it and realized the need for upping it because of all the different intensities of this Narcan or fentanyl. So, really appreciate the city also putting out all the information in the feeder and, and all the participation, so, thank you.
Yeah, I was, I've been to two of them so far, this one with the two of you. I would like to have seen more people, because I know that there are more people in Villa Park who have young children that are, that potentially could be exposed to this, you know, as early as, you know, elementary school up to middle school, all the way up through high school, it's not just the seniors that I worry about, but all of our children. And I was, would have hoped that we would have seen more people involved. The one in Santiago College was not as well-attended as the one here, but we, this was focused on Villa Park and surrounding areas, but I would like to see more, more parents get engaged and, and learn as much as they possibly can, because it can be, it can be life-saving. You know, you talk about the two, two things, the first one may not bring someone back, but the second one has the potential to, to actually bring someone back to life. So, we have to be careful about those things and learn as much as we possibly can. So, I appreciate, you know, what Don's doing across the whole county and what he's doing to try to bring awareness to this, because it's, it's a terrible problem. Yes, I went to the Villa Park Women's League and the Rotary event the other night, and yes, we were one of the auction items. My wife and I are sous chefs to our, our son, we're hosting, I think, 10 people in our house for a dinner, where we're cooking dinner for, for the 10 people, and we raised money off of that, so I'm looking forward to that event. I won't be sitting at the end of the table at night, so, but it will be fun, so. But I appreciate, you know, back to the service clubs, I really do appreciate everything they do for this city. I mean, NCL, all the, all the groups, young men's, and all of us have had children in every one of those, you know, organizations, Boy Scouts, you know, yeah, I went, I went Sunday to Troop 850 and spent almost an hour talking about what we do as city council folks, you know, to govern the city and things like that, the infrastructure and so forth and so on, and it was really exciting. Some of the questions that the young people were asking me about what we did, you know, I don't think they realized. And there's some sharp kids in there too, I mean, some of them smarter than me, but anyway, but I did enjoy the Boy Scout 850 troop as well, so, yep, that's it. So, we will adjourn until the next regular city council meeting on October the 24th at 6:30 p.m. Thank you for participating, have a good evening, stay safe.
Thank you.